This meeting in the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established. The meeting's been duly called and the notice of the meeting's been posted in the time and manner required. Monthly meetings of the board are designed to conduct the business of governing the school system in public. However, this is not a meeting to interact with the public. We welcome you as guests to observe and listen, and we do have a scheduled time within the agenda for public, for the public to address the board. First item on our agenda is the prayer and pledge of allegiance. Dr. Nation?
Thank you, Ms. Stan. Our Lord, faithful protector and guide, thank you for freedom to gather as a people and sincerely work together for the good of the children of our community. We ask your comfort and blessing on those in the community who are grieving. Let us find your light in the darkness and find assurance for a better day, for there's a better day tomorrow coming. Lord, we as a board, as we discuss the business of Tyler ISD, give each of us the wisdom to recognize your guidance and the courage to follow it. I ask your blessing on all who have come out this evening and all connected to TISD and Tyler, Texas, but especially for your protection and blessings on the children whose hands hold the future. In the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We do have action coming out of executive session under item B. Do I have a motion?
President Hager, teacher Kayla Wright's employment contract was proposed for termination at a board meeting previously held on January 24th, 2019. The primary reason for her proposed termination was abandonment of her job teaching at Hubbard Middle School. Written notice was promptly mailed to Mrs. Wright the day after that meeting in compliance with the Texas Education Code. The district has not received any requests for a hearing on the proposed termination, and more than 15 days have passed. I move that the board terminate Kayla Wright's employment contract with the district effective immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfeld. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford.
Good evening.
Tonight, we'd like to begin our recognitions by introducing the February Students of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Mario Ruiz, and he is a fifth grader at Caldwell Arts Academy. And our Secondary Student of the Month is Jose Guana, a 12th grade student at John Tyler High School. Now, please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two District Students of the Month. These students are selected based on six criteria: academic performance, effort, character, behavior, citizenship, and attendance. We would like to recognize Mario Ruiz, a fifth grade student at Caldwell Arts Academy, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Mario says he understands what it takes to be a good student.
Being a successful student slash good student means a lot of different things. Like, you can be a good student talented-wise, or you could be a good student mathematically-wise, scientifically-wise. To be a good student, you have to be good with different sort of things hitting at you, okay? So, like, you actually have to be very good with different stuff. Like, it's not just because, like, you have to know everything, but I mean, like, you have to be ready for what hits you to be a good student.
Mario says his favorite classes are social studies and drama. He says he loves what they're learning. He also says he has future plans, a list of future plans.
The top four things I want to be. Okay, so first off, of course, you want to go to college. Second, like, I actually want to be in the Army. Then lawyer, that's what I want to be after. So lawyer, fighting for justice, yes, that's number one, really. And then after that, I want to be a musician. After I be a lawyer and I'm retired, I want to be a musician to deliver my golden years, really.
Our Secondary Student of the Month is Josue Guana, a senior at John Tyler High School, who also takes classes at the Career and Technology Center. Josue is one of the top students at John Tyler, and he says his favorite class is practicum Emergency Medical Technician. This class is taught at the CTC and has dual credit collaboration with Tyler Junior College and UT Health Northeast.
And in the Singleton's class, we learn a lot of skills concerning, like, treating life threats and patient care. And it's really cool, because we get the opportunity to go out on rotations and, like, actually work in the ambulance, so it's a pretty good experience for me for the future. Around April, we take the certification test, and then we pass that, we are certified EMTs, and after we turn, like, 21, I think we get to actually work as an EMT.
With graduation just months away, Josue knows what his future plans will be.
After graduation, I plan to go to college, and after that, hopefully, attend medical school. And I plan to pursue a career as a surgeon. My mom also has been a great influence to me in that. She's, since little, told me, like, that she wanted me to be a doctor, but more than that, I started to figure out that it's really my passion, so.
Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and leadership in the classroom. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Frances Health System.
Okay, and at this time, I'd like to introduce you to our Elementary Student of the Month, Mario Ruiz. Next, we'd like to congratulate Delilah Hernandez. She's a fifth grader at Caldwell Arts Academy, and Anaya Martinez, a third grader at Douglas Elementary. Both of these two young ladies have had their artworks selected to be part of the Texas Art Educators Youth Art Month Capitol Celebration. This exhibit showcases pre-K through 12 works of art from across the state of Texas, and we would like to ask these two ladies to please come forward. She's a 10th grader at Robert E. Lee High School. She finished third in the district championship 500 freestyle and for winning swimmer of the meet. She also placed seventh in the district championship final of the 100 Butterfly, which crushed her own record as well as the school record. So Caroline, please come forward at this time. Congratulations to Carrie Clark, a Robert E. Lee 12th grader, for winning two district swim titles in the 50 and 100 freestyle. He finished second in the 50 freestyle and fourth in the 100 freestyle at the regionals and qualified for the state championship in both events. This past weekend, he competed in the state championship and finished 13th in the 50. So congratulations, Carrie. Congratulations to Coach Lisa Snell from Dr. Brian C. Jack Elementary School. Coach Snell recently led the Jack Campus in the Jump Rope for Heart Initiative and raised over $18,000 for the American Heart Association. Congratulations, Coach Snell. Please come forward. Finally tonight, we'd like to congratulate our Tyler ISD Food Service Department for meeting all the National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program requirements assessed by the Texas Department of Agriculture in the 2018 Administrative Review. The Texas Department of Agriculture extends its appreciation to Tyler ISD for promoting and for advancing the well-being of our students. Congratulations, and this is Mr. Oliveras.
Item eight, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for our board workshop from January 17th, 2019. Do I have any discussion or changes to the minutes as presented? If none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes for January 17th, 2010.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next up, continuous improvement, goal number one.
Student outcomes, we put this at the front of our meeting even before public participation. It's that valuable that we are discussing publicly in front of the community our goals and aspirations for our students, especially when it comes to accountability and assessment of learning. Tonight, we have with us Dr. Kristi Hansen, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Raleigh Sanchez. We also have Director of Assessment and Accountability, Dr. James Kuratin. Doc, that's taken me a year to get your title right. And then our three Executive Directors of School Improvement, Ms. Ward, Dr. Davis, and Mr. Bitter sitting behind them, because this is kind of where the responsibility lies on the improvement of our campuses, past the campus principal. So, who's leading this off? Dr. Hansen?
So, we're going to start with our middle-of-the-year reading scores. Make sure that I can make this work. There we go. Let's start first with our MAP scores, K-1 through 3, because that's where our progress measure, measurement is. The percentage of K through third grade students who have on, who will be on grade level. Supposed to be 67% by the end, by the spring of 2019. So you can see there where our middle-of-the-year scores are in comparison to 2018. So we're sitting at about 39.2% that are on grade, that have a grade level writ right now in the middle of the year. We also ran, there we go, sorry. So this is the performance of the kindergarten through eighth grade reading scores as compared to last year, as far as the students who are actually on grade level. So most of our grade levels, we had a little bump in data. We also ran cohort data. So when you look at first grade, for example, those were the kindergartners last year at middle of the year compared to the first graders, those same kids, middle of the year this year, and so forth. So in second grade, there would be first graders last year to second grade, middle of the year this year. So those are the same kids, which is a little different than that. Those were comparing different kids, same grade level. This, we're doing different grade levels, same kids. This is a school scatter plot, so you can see the campuses here compared to 2018. If they are on or above that line, then they made some improvements last year in reading performance as far as kids being on grade level. The green ones, the lime green ones are elementary campuses, and the blue ones are middle school campuses.
So distance away from that line is good.
Above, yes, yes. So distance would be more.
Caldwell Woods, big improvement.
Yes, big improvement.
At or above, right?
At, mhm. And Bonner, too. So you see Bonner has a big, big space there as well from the line. Keep in mind, when we're looking at middle schools, that there was a big shift in the middle school kids. They're, they sort of, with our zoning. So it was a little hard to compare those numbers. They're not exactly apples-to-apples, because those are not always the same kids when we're talking about middle schools, especially. We had a big difference in, in kids there. So this is the MAP growth, which is different than just pure performance. Here, we're looking at the students who actually grew in what we would anticipate to be a significant amount or the appropriate amount in, since, in one year, or in half a year since middle of the year. Same essential scatter plot. So there, you see, we've got Bolter, Bell, Jones. So that's, those are big jumps there. So when we look at MAP math performance, this is not reading, it's math, similar, these are the, these are from grade level to grade level. So those were kindergartners last year, kindergartners this year, different kids. Five of the nine have a larger percentage of students who are on grade level in math compared to last year. And then this is the cohort data. So the kindergartners last year, first graders this year. And this is the campus scatter plot for our math performance, which is at grade level. That's, that's our line there. And the growth. So you can see that at our elementary campuses, we've had a lot of growth in math. So basically, the campuses who have maintained progress as of last year, if we're looking at projections, we have all of those campuses on the left who have maintained their progress within three points, plus or minus three points. And the ones on the right, they have actually improved over last year. Bell, Bonner, Caldwell, Dixie, and Woods, as far as their projections. And the projections would be at 85% confidence level. That's domain one for our accountability system if we're projecting how they'll do So that's the summary of the MAP scores.
Hey, go back.
Yes, sir.
No, the, we had the campus listings.
Are there?
Why are they in lavender or gray, whatever color that is?
The lavender and gray.
So what we did is highlighted the campuses based on where their confidence intervals were. So the lavender campuses, their confidence interval indicates they're, well, those campuses are currently projected to meet standard in domain one, but the confidence intervals overlap with the not met standard. So it's possible that if they don't grow like they did last year, that they could miss that standard. So we highlighted them.
On domain one?
Correct.
Okay.
On performance.
If they make the growth in the spring that they made last year with all of the various interventions, then we have every anticipation that they'll do well. If they were sort of to plot along in, at the same trajectory as they did in the fall, they may not make it. That's what that confidence interval level means. Campuses and kids make tremendous amount of progress in the spring semester. They just make a lot of progress, especially those kindergarten, first grade kids.
Dr. Hansen, why don't you share with the board what you, I think it's at Austin, where your, your shop has deployed some folks out to help with it, with what they're doing there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Explain what, explain what you're doing.
And, are you mean the phonics part? Is that what you mean?
No, I thought you deployed some of your CNI department to Austin to assist in what they're doing right now.
And, well, Austin is doing a great job, you know, under Dr. Davis and, and Brandy Holland, they're doing a great job. I know that they've done a lot of training with the curriculum and with the, the phonics piece and really trying to implement that with fidelity. Austin has done that. I know Woods has done a lot of training along the same lines. And so they've, they've been very involved with really helping those kids at the early grade levels.
So on this, on that same slide, improving over last year, then I see less than three points. Explain that.
It should be flipped, yeah. It's just a, it's more than three points, yeah.
Be greater than or less?
It should be greater than three points, not less than. Sorry.
Much better, thank you.
Can you go back to the first slide? Well, not, yeah, that, that one.
I knew it.
39.2% of students on grade level, and if I heard you right, we, to maintain our progress towards our goal of having 85% of kids on track, we should be at 65% right now instead of just under 40%, correct?
Right. That is, that is the progress measure that we, that we were looking at when we set these. So last year, we came up overall in reading in the third grade, 8% at the end. We came up 8%. The year before, we were right at 8% as well. So we, if we continue to make those ticks, we'll be right at the 85% by the projected time. But we have not met that projected goal at the middle, at the middle of the year since we, since we created these goals. We are closer by the end of the year than 40% for sure. And but just remember, this is middle of the year, so we're trying to get to 67% by the end of the year.
And the, I think your comments, the last time we looked at this data was that our rate of improvement was positive. It wasn't quite as fast as you wanted it to be.
That's correct.
And then, so when I see, and I think the other conclusion was that the longer the kids had been in our new curriculum, the better they were performing.
Right.
And then I see this chart with kindergarten and first grade slipping back, and it seems like the trend has reversed in the early grades. So can you comment on what do you think's happening there?
Sure. So first of all, can't, it's not just the new curriculum. I think there's a combination of a lot of things happening. There, there is a new curriculum. There is an emphasis on foundational skills, and there's a lot of emphasis at the campus, so the campus leadership and certainly on Mr. Sanchez's side. We've got a lot of, lot of team effort things going. So that's why I think we see that, that little bump in third grade there, and certainly that cohort data in from second to third grade. Those, those kids have been under this system of early foundational skills for two years, two years. So I think that's why we're seeing that. The kindergarten and first grade, we have some hypothesis about that. And I, we didn't get an implementation dip last year, so I don't, it could be that. There could be, we're examining the assessment calendar as far as when we assess our younger kids. We did that the week we got back from the holidays. I'm not sure that was absolutely the best time to do that. And we, you know, we also are taking a strong look at those foundational skills as far as curriculum, implementation. Are we, are our teachers trained? When we did the phonics conference, we, we did, through the survey, the teachers felt like they didn't have enough training. There were only about 37% of the teachers that were there that felt really confident in the, in teaching the foundational skills. And so I think that data is something for us to look at as well. When we're talking about kinder first, second, to really make sure that, that we're training and that everyone feels confident with what we need to do for the kids.
And that, that 60%, Reverend Hager, of teachers not feeling confident in those phonemic, phonetical, whatever, phonics skills, matches up with a national, with national data. They feel, you know, teachers that have, that have gone through either teacher preparation programs at the university or Alt, or Alt-Cert, or whatever they've gone through, feel that they're, that, that teaching phonics is a lost science and a lost art, that they need that support. And that came back on our survey, that, how much did you say? You only said 37% of our staff felt comfortable with phonics?
And felt like it was being taught with consistency on their campus. That's, that's staff and administrators.
So that was, that's a pretty big, we had discussions the last two weeks about with professional development. What are we doing to enhance that, if that's, if that is truly a gap? So I'll say this on the data here, that K in one right here, now is this, is this the cohort data or is this the apples to oranges?
That's the performance data. This is the cohort data.
So I think the hypothesis of the longer the kids are in the curriculum holds true. If you look at three, four, and five, because if, when we started implementing this, we're really two years out, right, from when we first started this?
Yes.
So that would be this year's third grader, or second and third graders, I guess?
Third graders.
Third graders?
Mm-hmm.
Third graders?
Mm-hmm.
So I do think that that's providing us a little bit of a bump compared to what we might have had, seen if we wouldn't have had this early intervention. We've got to figure K in one out right now.
Yes.
Immediately. But I am interested to see what the end of the year data looks like, because we've had, it looks better by the end of the year because they've had a full year in the curriculum.
Right, right.
Speaking of end of the year, just maybe, I think every semester, we kind of have to remember that, okay, this is middle of the year data, so it's lagging, but we have our goal for what it should be in the spring. Maybe next time, can we have where we were middle of the year last year, but also where we were at the end of the year last year, to maybe, so we can see where that, how that jumped.
Sure, as some context.
Yes, just for a little context. I think it would kind of help buffer the typically lower middle of the year score, that we won't have to explain it away, you know?
But this is MAP, last year versus this year.
Middle of the year to middle of the year.
At the same time period, right?
Right. So in some ways, you are comparing where kids were last year. I think the kindergarten to first is a little different because the kindergarten test is really about letter recognition, sight sounds, it's not, that, that first grade test is really reading, the kindergarten is pre-reading. But still, I mean, they're, for the cohort data, that when you look at that, that data right there, that is middle of the year to middle of the year. So we should be getting some similar results, given everything, everything being similar.
In our pre-K classrooms and Head Start classrooms, I believe they also will lay a foundation for kindergarten first, so if those phonemic awareness skills are being presented and mastered at Head Start and pre, in our pre-K classrooms, that should give a strong foundation for the, for those kindergartners, who of course later on will be first graders. So hopefully, we, we will be assured that those teachers as well have a foundation so they can better be prepared to teach our children, since you have other teachers who don't feel like they're as strong as they should be. And I agree with them, they should be stronger. Pre-K, Head Start.
Dr. Hanson, with two-thirds of our teachers not feeling confident in their ability to teach phonics, do you have an estimate for how many would have gone through the reading academies the state put on at the end of the 90s? Are we looking at most of those teachers having moved on to other professions at this point, or retired? Or is this an issue of old skills that folks have forgotten, or first-time exposure?
Oh, let me, can I answer, may I answer that? I know you asked her that, but let me answer that. I have, I'm thinking that we, we saw at our workshop what our rates are as far as the taper report goes, as far as turnover, and our industry is, is in flux right now because of that. I'd say that we don't have too many veteran teachers that experienced the late 90s reading academies. I do have a feeling that even though we have 30% of our teachers, 37% of our teachers that say that they feel confident in that, I haven't run into too many rock stars that are coming out of teacher education programs that know how to do old school phonics. They just got away from teaching it. They went whole language, most of higher ed went whole language, and we just don't have that. We know that we have a gap there, and it's not just Tyler, but it's a Tyler issue and we have to address it. And so that's been emphasized for the last two weeks. So yes, sir, I don't think we have too many acad, we may have one or two. One I can think of, maybe right now off the top of my head, is it Rice? And I don't want to, Dana?
Ms. Tate?
Yep, Dana.
I don't know if she went through the reading academy or not.
I'm not sure.
She went through some other training.
Her and Ms. Bosley both, just to give you some commentary about it. Both spoke with me in regard to this aha that we've all had about phonics being a missing piece here in Tyler ISD, and that they were, they were here in Tyler when that happened, and we chose not to participate. You and I have discussed that with some of the state initiatives that were going on at that time, feeling like we could do it ourselves. We missed that opportunity, and now we're playing catch-up. So they're excited about it because they, they're big believers, and they wish we'd have done it back in the late 90s, 20-plus years ago. So that's kind of what we have. If they're with us, they're on the back end of their career probably in regard to where they're at with us. So it's, it's really our younger, less experienced teachers that don't have much of a base in phonics, and we've got to, we've got to help them get there.
Well, we've had the conversation, Dr. Crawford, you know how I feel about this. We, our district won't get to where we need it to be until this issue gets fixed.
No doubt.
This is the foundational issue, so. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Is she finished?
That was the end of the presentation. We have extra stuff.
Oh, I've been looking at all this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one has signed up for public comment, so we will move to item number 11. We'll pull B and F. Do I have any discussion or comments, Dr. Crawford, on the items other than B and F? If none, then I'll accept a motion for item 11, except for B and F.
I move we approve item 11, A through H, with the exception of B and F.
Thank you, Mr. Washman. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item B, gifts and donations.
Gifts and donations, this is always a highlight of a board meeting every month, when we have opportunities to announce these over $5,000 in value opportunities for our students that's been provided by our community. What an outstanding list we have tonight. First of all, it started at Rice, with the PTA at Rice, $15,000 for the purchase of Chromebooks. Pelche Chevrolet, TISD Athletics, I believe they were instrumental in providing some portions of the indoor batting facility y'all approved at Mike Carter Field. I'm sure we'll put a big Chevy bowtie up in there somewhere with Pelche right in the middle of it. Appreciative of them for giving our softball and baseball athletes an opportunity to, to practice in some, out of the elements while we've taken over some of their facilities on the, the high school campuses for construction. Cooperative Teacher Credit Union, everywhere you look up, CTCU is there. Everywhere we have something. Various TISD programs, we're appreciative of our partnership with CTCU. They're always around, $33,500 from CTCU. And then lastly, last week, we had a great week of shuttling around the Tyler ISD Foundation Board for their grants for Great Ideas. They have some members here tonight, Mr. Lasseya, Mr. Bell, and then Executive Director Betsy Jones. They have a big check that they want to, I think, take a picture with, at $63,662.13, Tyler ISD Foundation. CTCU also has a really big check to present to, so they would like this opportunity right now for the board to go down there and take a picture with those two final organizations.
So you want us down there with the big check?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Tyler ISD Foundation is pleased to present Tyler ISD with this gift for $63,662.13 to fund the 2018-2019 Grants for Great Ideas. This year, we're excited to fund over 21 grants that will impact over 18 campuses and over 7,500 students. We're looking forward to seeing those grants in action.
Thank you, Tyler ISD Foundation.
I'll just say something quick. Thank you. We're always appreciative of what you do, and we are here for you.
I'll take a motion to accept the gifts we just posed for pictures with.
I move that we accept these gifts with great gratitude.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item F, Dr. Crawford?
Item F is the purchase of Ethernet switches and wireless network for John Tyler High School and Robert E. Lee High School. This is part of our bond program, and we're going to invite Chief Technology Officer, Chief Joseph Jacks, to explain this to y'all, because this technology does pretty high-tech, and y'all may have some questions about it.
So thank you, Board and Dr. Crawford, for letting me explain how we got to this, making this choice to purchase this particular set of Ethernet switches and wireless network for John Tyler and Robert E. Lee. I have some notes here prepared, so if you'd like me, I'd like to walk you through the process real quick of how we came to this decision, and then if you have some questions, feel free to ask away. As you may or may not be aware, there's a program called E-Rate. It's a federal program that provides funds and assists districts in purchasing networking equipment for, at a significant discount. We've participated in the E-Rate program for the last 19 years. They've given us a lot of money to help fund lots of projects with our network. When we're evaluating proposals, we utilize a scoring rubric that includes price, quality, available resources, company financials, K-12 experience, and E-Rate experience, with the most heavily weighted item being price when evaluating these proposals. During this process, we worked with our E-Rate consultant, Alvin Myers, who we have worked with for the last 19 years in all of our E-Rate projects. And he was working with us every step of the way to make sure that we were following the proper procedures to make sure we qualified for all the E-Rate funding we could. In this particular case, the E-Rate funding for this project will pay for about half of the project, so we want to make sure we followed all the rules. So we posted our RFPs in January, we waited the requisite 30 days, and then we scored our bids based on that scoring rubric that was included in all our RFPs and provided to all the folks who submitted proposals. As you can see, we did not select the lowest bid in this case from Cloud Ingenuity, and there's several factors why we did not select the lowest bid. After utilizing our scoring rubric, we came to the conclusion that the wireless, the low-bid wireless proposal was actually the sixth-best overall option with a score of 70 versus the winner who scored a 90 after going through our scoring mechanism. The Ethernet proposal actually, the low-bid Ethernet proposal scored seventh-best overall with a score of 67 versus the winner that had an 86 score. Points were deducted in both, both options for the Ethernet switches and the wireless bids for a couple of reasons. One being that this low-bid proposal was what we consider to be an inferior product to what we requested in the RFP. The equipment, it will not seamlessly integrate into Tyler ISD's existing infrastructure and does not provide full functionality that we requested in the RFP that we put out to all the folks at USAC. The company, this company that, that provided this low bids in both cases, they're a relatively new company, they've only been in business for about two years. They don't have a very long track record of references or E-Rate experience or K-12 experience. Are they a good company? Perhaps they are, but we don't have a track record to go by, and that's why we made some of the deductions that we did. Cloud Ingenuity provided bids for gear that we consider to be comparable to what we asked for. However, as you'll see in the Board agenda item, their other bids were significantly higher, and we feel that the low bid that they submitted is for equipment that is not comparable to what we asked for. Keep in mind that everything technology in our new high schools is going to rely on the wired network, Ethernet switches, and the wireless network. In many respects, it's just as important as the steel and the concrete and electricity that's used to build these buildings. Whenever it comes down to the operation of everything technology in Robert E. Lee and John Tyler High School, it's going to be based on the foundation of these key components, the Ethernet switches and the wireless network. So keep in mind, well, for an example, what I, I'm sorry, let me step back here. This equipment that they bid in the low proposal was, again, it's, it's not going to work well with our existing equipment. We are a Cisco shop across the board at all of our campuses. We have Cisco switches and Cisco wireless network. We upgraded most of that gear using E-Rate dollars over the past three to five years, and every campus, including our core administration building, is all Cisco. So that's what we asked for in the RFP was Cisco equipment that would be comparable and that would integrate seamlessly into our environment. Let me give you an example of, if you have a Chevy, a Chevy truck, and you go down to the parts store to get parts for your Chevy truck, you're not going to buy Ford parts because they're a little cheaper. You may be able to get your, your car running, but it's probably not going to run like it should, and that's kind of what this equates to. Also, our staff at TISD is trained and certified on Cisco gear, which is also what every other vendor bid. They, every other vendor that, that put a proposal in, bid what we asked for, which was Cisco equipment. But our staff, they, they have experience with Cisco gear, they have no experience with these other products. They don't, which could, if we were to go with that, it could cause us to have to hire an outside company to help us install it or maintain it, because we don't have experience with it. If there were network outages, we could have to call an outside help to help us maintain it or get it working, which could cause us to be more delays in getting repaired. So these are just some, some thought process that we went to through when scoring these bids. Finally, as far as the bids that we are asking you to accept tonight, with the wireless proposal, we did go with the lowest, the second-lowest bid. They bid exactly what we asked for, and we accepted, we're accepting the second-lowest bid. And on the switch side of the house, we are accepting the third bid, which, the reason we're not accepting the second bid is because they actually bid equipment that is what we call end-of-life, which means this is the last year they're going to make it. And the third proposal for $6,000 more bid the equipment that is the replacement of this equipment, and it'll be the new style equipment that'll be supported down the road. So that's just kind of a nutshell of how we got to this, went through this process and got to this point, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have this time.
Board, as you're getting ready to ask your questions, one thing about the, this, even without the E-Rate, this would be acceptable within our bond budget for the technology that we already have. So we're well within budget on the bond. Adding the E-Rate in on this does give, give us a little bit more cost savings in regard to that project, the technology part of the project.
Any other questions? Obviously, we pulled this, A, because it's a significant purchase, but also because we were not going with the low-priced vendor. Thank you for your explanation for why. That makes, in your opinion, it's the best interest of the district. Why are we looking at this so far in advance right now?
I'm glad you asked. Well, E-Rate, which we're, because we're wanting to get these E-Rate funds, and E-Rate is a government entity, and it's, as you know, government has a long cycle. In order to get these funds, to qualify for these funds, we had to apply now, so the E-Rate cycle starts in January. We post our RFPs in January as soon as we return from Christmas break. They have to wait 30 days before we can score them, which we just finished scoring them, just where we're at now. Assuming you approve this agenda item, we will file information with USAC, file the appropriate paperwork to apply for this funding, which is going to be somewhere in the range of approximately $450,000, approximately half. They will not give us the funding until around July. In July, we should get approval of funding, we can make the, the order, order the equipment, it'll show up sometime mid-late summer. We'll install that equipment in the late summer, early fall, to get ready to move into John Tyler by Christmas break, or at Christmas break. So it's about a year-long process. Once we install the equipment, we'll file more paperwork, and then we'll be able to reimburse that money.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Looper said it's not too early to do this.
Not too early.
On D, y'all already approved it, just explanation there on the appeal and audit services. Tab Bell is in the back of the room, and I, Tab, wave your hand. His firm will be assisting the district in reviewing our revenue, and if it looks like that some of our revenue may be appealable to the state, we will be awarded those if they're successful in that appeal. On the way that they'll be paid, it will be actually through their success with the state in finding those revenues through our tax, the tax collections, and then what the state's supposed to be sending back towards Smith County. So if we're successful, we'll come back with you on another, and another meeting to tell you about that success, so. But on item number 12, with A, it's our early college high school renewal with Tyler Junior College. We submit this to the state of Texas for our early college high school program. We're excited about this year, because this will be the first graduating class for early college high school in Tyler ISD. About, how many graduates, Mr. Sanchez?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven graduates this first year. They'll actually receive their, most of them, some of them will actually receive their TJC diploma prior to their high school diploma. It's a neat, it's going to be a neat thing. It won't be at the same time. They'll actually walk at TJC, and then actually walk at Rose Stadium, oh, excuse me, Caldwell Auditorium with early college high school. So this is the annual approval. This is the plus-one. In other words, we're actually one year past our first graduating cohort going through this. This is the fifth year that we're doing this. We're very proud of early college high school, an A-rated campus, by the way.
All right. Any other questions or comments on 12A? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move, go ahead, go ahead.
You got it.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Tyler Junior College and TISD for early college.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Mr. Washington, was that a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Superintendent Staff Report, DOI. Yeah, this is an annual report that we're providing to the public, to the Board, about the District of Innovation certified teachers that have been afforded. You know, sometimes I think y'all probably wonder, I don't know, I'm not a board member, so I can't be in your shoes, but sometimes I wonder if you wonder if what you're doing actually truly makes an impact in the, at the classroom level. Sometimes I wonder that about my job, but I can certainly say that because of the District of Innovation Committee's recommendation, after working with administration, and then your adoption of the DOI, that we are making impact. If you look at the list right here, we have 39 teachers that are DOI-certified. In other words, they have a college degree, or they have the equivalency, sometimes in career technology courses, to be listed as a cert, as the teacher of record in those classrooms that would fill what would normally be vacancies filled by substitute teachers. We have degreed professionals who may not have gone through teacher prep programs, or maybe are already in an alternatively certified program, but they haven't completed it yet, that are actually inside of our classrooms, teaching our kids. While we would love to have certified teachers that have gone through teacher ed programs, like Dr. Nation, Ms. Washington, Reverend Mason, and myself have gone through to teach our kids, the game has changed. A lot of factors have changed that. The economy, the economics have, the politics have, and we need these creative ways to go about making sure that our students have degreed professionals teaching them. So proudly presenting this list to the Board tonight for District of Innovation certified professionals that have really helped us knock down the vacancies that we have in our campuses, along with the reliance upon substitute teachers. We love our subs, and they're needed, no doubt, but to have a degreed professional in a classroom is something that's extremely important to us, and I think it's a good alternative to someone who wouldn't be certified.
Speaking just broadly about District of Innovation, and we feel like, you know, like in this case, it's helped us, and I think on a lot of levels, we've benefited from it. Do you think, across the state, all the districts who've gotten District of Innovation distinctions are feeling the same way, and do you think there's a possibility that the state could maybe broaden, you know, because I know we're limited to, you know, what items we could choose for being a District of Innovation, and we had to be picky about it, but I know there are some other things where our, you know, hands are kind of cuffed by the state. Do you think that maybe in this session, they'll come up with a few ideas to broaden that spectrum?
Yeah, let me answer your first question. I think the 750 or 800 districts that have chosen, and the boards and their communities that have gone for District of Innovation, I don't think they regret it at all. I do think there's probably some variance there upon how happy and how deep they actually went. I think our plan was pretty aggressive. There are some districts that just maybe only chose one item, and I think that they would, if they could have done it, if they'd have gone through the two- or three-month process, they would have gone back and done some of it, because they kind of had to start it back over again, once they wanted to add some things. As far as this legislative session go, from what I'm hearing, what I'm hoping, what I'm praying for, is that there are just some things that are adjusted in statute, instead of just added to the DOI. I think that there's some information coming out of legislative session, where they're going to look at some items and maybe make some adjustments to statute that is binding to school systems, and take it out altogether. Right now, all the right things are being said out of Austin, and they've got a long way to go to get there, especially on the Senate side. So the House is really working hard, even our local rep, and even our state senator have been in contact with district personnel here in regard to some pretty, pretty big challenges for school systems. And pairing that with teacher pay and the achievement pay that they've been floating around, I think can be transformational for our school system, school systems, if they're really considered and voted into law on that. I hate speaking in code to you, but yeah, it looks like that they're trying to relieve us of some things, including standardized testing. That's still on the table.
Well, not to sound too much like Yogi Berra or anything like, but I think it's about time that we get smart about education, you know what I mean? So, anyway.
Dr. Crawford, this is the second year that we've had this flexibility, is that correct? Do we have a sense for how retention is for these alternatively certified teachers?
I think only maybe qualitative with Ms. Kano and Dr., excuse me, Mr. Jones. Can y'all provide what your feelings are as far as retention goes on the DOI?
We're having great retention. The certification that we offer is only good with Tyler ISD, and so once they're here, they tend to stay and grow. There's some that experience difficulty with asset management, or lesson planning, and maybe this isn't for me, but for the most part, they're staying. We haven't lost anyone because, you know, from DOI.
And y'all know that the DOI contract is a one-year deal, so it's exempted from Chapter 21 contract law, which, that is something they're considering down in Austin right now, is adjustments to Chapter 21 of the Code in regard to contracts. So retention's worked here, it's been something that, with what Ms. Kano has said, that maybe we've hit onto something here. And there's not too many districts, I don't think, that are actually using this part of the DOI on the certifications. We were one of the first ones that really went out there and put it out there, that we wanted to go look at just degreed professionals and put them through our teacher training program, to see if we can make an impact there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff? Future Business, item 14.
Future Business, we have upcoming board meetings in the workshop, March 7th, and then we have spring break in between there. Spring break is March 11th, is that right, y'all? I don't know, I don't ever think about our next break. I'd have to defer to the assistants and the executive directors. When's y'all's next break?
Or the parents.
11th, begins with the, and if you, if you, Mr. Bitter's already thinking, it's really nine days. It's not just five. Nine full days. So that's in there, starting on March 11th, and then March 25th is our regular board meeting. Well, five days, Reverend Mason, of the work week, and then four days of weekends on the bookend, so.
Okay, that concludes our business tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Reverend Mason, second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We adjourn. Thank you.